My only, my only concern is that we've done away with the higher licensing fees, it looks like. I've got the application fee is two hundred and fifty dollars. So if we're gonna eliminate the higher licensing fees, then I think we need to put a, a limit on how many licenses we allow in town. Because the whole point of the original licensing fee was to keep us from becoming, you know, Manchester light.
I agree.
I, I agree, but I'm wondering if we can postpone that for something in two thousand and twenty-four, an early agenda item.
Well, I mean, to be quite honest, I mean, what we heard is negative against business and so I say, open it up.
I, I disagree exactly. I, I'm with Linda.
Open it up. Let everybody in and whatever.
I don't think we should be building a, a, a little monopoly in town with low license fees and only allowing for people.
Well, no, but, but if we kept the higher license, the higher initial fee, it would limit the people that could come in.
Right.
Initial fee I thought was fourteen hundred dollars.
Doing away with all.
No, they're changing it into here two fifty, but in right now it's fourteen hundred. And what that's doing is.
It was two fifty.
Yeah.
The initial fee was two fifty, the yearly fee was fourteen hundred.
That's, that's what I mentioned. So if you lower that, then why limit? Just let everybody in.
I agree.
I think competition will take care of the numbers.
Competition will take care of the numbers.
I'm, I'm in favor of that too. I mean, if we're gonna lower the fees, but I don't, I don't. A lot of folks want to come here and do business. I don't want to be not business friendly. You just want to open it up.
Open it up.
To your resident point, you know, it will naturally serve itself in conversation. We either will take, take hold or not, so.
Yep.
Okay. Has everybody said what they had to say? I'm under orders. The rest is staying through, so.
No.
No one else? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, Chair will entertain.
There's a way, there's a question on Zoom.
Oh, no, no, that's, that's just the, that's just the cursor.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion in item two eighteen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments the marijuana ordinance had presented.
All right.
Okay, second, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Linda, you're favored, okay. Just for director, everyone, but.
Why don't we say, say all opposed, so I can see.
All opposed. Okay, have you now? There we go.
It's not, it's not a matter whether we're happy, it's procedure.
Sure, I know, but I'm just trying to keep things.
Yeah.
All right, so at this point, should we pass the way the second reading?
Sold.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, if you have anything, all opposed? All opposed, okay. All right. I just have, I got two first favors. All right, item two nineteen, consideration of zoning ordinance amendments to meet requirements of LD two oh oh three.
Two sixteen.
That was a second reading, I think. We skipped that, nobody here.
To the end, I think.
Yeah, or if they don't show up by the end of the meeting, we don't, we, we won't. Okay.
A little bit of discussion.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So upon further review of some of the LD two thousand and three updates, I just have a couple of questions, one of which is, what defines a like system for sewer and water? And are we going to include that in here? And then are we going to install a process for monitoring Airbnb short-term rentals? Is that something separate? Okay.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
I want to make sure I understand your question about the sewer and water.
Yeah, what is defined as a like system for sewer and water?
Whether it's private or public, is that what they're referring to?
And Dawn, do you know?
Uh, so I had some of the materials from the two thousand and three. I can get back to you in just a second. Hold on. Yeah.
I had a question. Are we talking about probably shortening up that overlay to just what was public water and sewer?
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, good.
And, and, and just so you both know, and Dawn and I were talking about this earlier today. We think that is the skinniest option that you guys have before you.
Yeah.
To, to limit the affordable housing.
And I wanted to say, I'm not against a lot of that. I just want to have time to review it. And if we can try to fit this with our guidelines, and the only reason I really kind of like to review a little bit is, you know, septic systems and water, and that, that's all good. The more we add to it, I'm just, you put one in, and it could fail three or four years ago, and, and my, two of my sons are buying homes, both of them failed, failed septic. We just don't know that. So I'm more comfortable if we're gonna cause or create expansion, that it has a, a system that's gonna be able to handle it right now. And then just have more discussion and more review around another part of it. So that's where I'm, I'm personally, I like the overlay small right now. So we have time to review it. It's not the same. I think it's a bad idea. I just want the time to review it.
And, and, and just, and just so you, you know, at our next meeting on January, the plan, designated group area, so that you guys can start weighing in on how large we should intention. Uh, and in fact, I got an email today from Joel Green, who was just suggesting, you know, maybe we start with the two thousand and ten area and expand from there, if, if that's the pleasure of the conversation.
The thing with this, with all those developments, I, I just, one.
We can talk for your end.
A lot of those developments, that is gonna trickle down to all the services. So everything has, gonna have to expand, the schools, everything else. When all this huge development comes in, that is what you gotta think about.
Yeah, and, and so Linda, though, I think that's the misnomer is we're not talking about large apartment complexes. We're not talking about subsidized housing. We're talking about affordable housing developments.
If there's a hundred affordable housing developments, I can guarantee that even if half of them have, have kids, schools, school costs will go up, then the whole thing, it's still based on, yeah, but the number of units across the entire town, if, you know, that's what you gotta consider.
Understand.
And, and of course, if it's not across the entire town, it's just for the area.
Right now, it's, right, that's what I'm saying, down the road.
I, I agree with Linda. If you took a property like the Mill, you converted that into affordable rental housing. You know, we could be talking seventy, a hundred units. Okay, yes.
No, 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 again.
Think about all the buildings.
And, and here, I'm gonna read directly from, uh, from the memo. Hold on a second. Okay, so, and, and, and I talked to Stephen McDermott about this, because I think it was important to get this right and, and because he has a deep understanding of the financing involved with these sort of developments. And at the bottom of page two of the memo, uh, we write, it is unlikely that district will result in first pathing developments for apartment complexes. Stephen McDermott points out that any developer seeking the density bonus must demonstrate financial feasibility before securing finance. That is a more strenuous task when rich rents are indexed to income. And again, this would serve people who earn uh, no more than eighty percent of the area median income, and the rent could, and, uh, take up no more than thirty percent of their, of their earned income. So Maine Housing, the state's housing finance agency, offers planning one financing program that provides subsidy and paying debt per unit that can be rented by a household with incomes up to eighty percent of the area median income. That program, the rural affordable rental housing program, limits projects to no more than eighty. So, so I think, I think delay any sort of concerns that we're gonna see these large, uh, like, and I asked Pat Ladd as well, I said, do you think that's even a feasible possibility for our community? He said, no way.
All right.
Good.
But, um, Elizabeth?
No, I'm, I'm fine with the, uh, the ordinance as written, because we already have reduced our size uh, for the relevant area. So I'm, I'm fine with this.
Good, Ruth?
Um, I, I just don't like the village application, the lot size, thirty-five hundred, uh, three thousand five hundred square feet. And you can put a little house on it and stuff like that. I just think that it's going to become, regardless of whether the sewer and water can handle it, it's just gonna, I think, just attract each aspect of where they live.
And so.
Okay, there's gonna be. Well, Shannon, we'll get back here in a minute.
So, so the minimum lot size of the village is, is thirty-five hundred square feet. To have additional dwellings on there, you have to have another, so essentially you have to have at least two lots in the village in order to do that.
It's still only seven thousand square feet.
Yes, uh, but.
No additional parking too, that was the other thing.
Yeah, um, and, and that's why we put an asterisk on here, is because the minimum lot size in the village district is approximately one twelve of what it is of, of one acre. And so one acre developments are not likely to incur, half acre developments may not even be likely to occur, but if you do that, it could handle up to five units currently and up to twelve under the proposed regulation. And to speak to your concern about septic spruce, this simply, these, this amendment simply increases the density bonus. It does not relax any of the other rules that are currently in our zoning ordinance when it comes to things like septic systems. And so one of the reasons I asked Mark here this evening, and so we can speak for this if need be, but if someone wants to develop this sort of housing, they're going to have to still meet all the requirements for subjects that currently exist in the ordinance, otherwise they don't get.
Well, in the village, it would be public water and sewer.
Oh, you're, you're correct about that.
Okay, I, and if we're going to have development opened up, then we should have development zones within our community. Turkey Lane, something like that, where the developer is going to provide the plumbing and sewer again on the town system. So that million dollar a mile thing that Public Works likes to say is kind of for naught, you know, because the developer would cover those costs and hooking it up. I just think that, you know, if I'm a intuitive homeowner and I have a double lot, I can see the opportunity where I don't have to go to the bank. I don't have to carry a mortgage on it. I can put three tiny houses up on my house or in my lots, and I'd be within the timeframe with the ordinance.
Yes, but the economics still come into play in that you gotta have the financing available in order to provide a rental unit for no more than thirty percent of what some of you earns, eighty percent of the area median income would pay. And so it, it's.
What, what is that?
So, so in order to do that, affordable housing is a lot less lucrative than if you just built a single home and just sold it at, at market value.
It's thirty percent of eighty thousand a year median income or anything?
So, so, so it depends, is it on the size of the household, Roy, but let's just say like a fruit member house. Okay, so eighty percent of, uh, that for our area would be fifty-two thousand dollars for a two-person household, which may be one income, but may be two incomes.
And yet thirty percent of that is all they can charge for rent.
Yes.
Which is thirteen hundred dollars, Mark.
Let's, let's get back, I think we gotta back up to Shannon.
Oh, no.
No, you're good?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah. Okay, Bruce, anything else?
No, I just, I'm unclear on those, uh, and I'd like to get clarification before we move forward with it.
James. So, so Bruce, clarification on.
I, I, I'm just concerned about the thirty-five hundred square foot, somebody that just wants to invest in a couple of properties and stick them on an extra lot. And doesn't care, but, you know, and then he could, it doesn't say you have to rent the low-income properties, correct?
Different than else.
For what, what, what?
Yes, so.
But if, if I want to build two houses on my lot, then there should be nothing, and I'm gonna finance it myself. I can charge whatever I want for rent, but I can still put them in under the ordinance.
No, it has to be affordable housing. So if it's not affordable housing, and, and the density bonus does not apply.
So, who monitors whether this is being rented as affordable housing or not?
Funding, yeah. The state is providing mechanism. Uh, I don't know what that is, but in this. They say that you can, they're gonna push with that. So there's gonna be mechanism in place, and ultimately, I believe the town is gonna play a big role in that. Um, I'm not sure how.
So shouldn't we have that set up before we?
Before we get involved.
Get in on this. And where does the Airbnb, my other question is, where does the Airbnb situation?
That would be a separate.
I, I like that.
Separate, be a separate.
Yeah, so that's, that's not affordable housing.
But who's monitoring it?
All right, so next, we got James. Do you want to answer that?
It's not regulated.
Regulating Airbnb.
Yeah, you can't regulate those.
Portland did come up with a policy for that, where the people who are renting. Have to live on a property.
My whole point is, if you, if these people are building these houses under this, getting the permits under the affordable housing, who is regulating the fact that they are actually renting it as affordable housing? And not building it as affordable housing and then renting it as an Airbnb?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, getting it permitted and, and, and asked under affordable housing, but aren't actually renting it as an Airbnb.
So, so as Dawn said, I mean, at this point, it's, it's, it's a state responsibility. And I know, I know the question you're gonna ask, but, but here's the thing, Roy, is that, that this is, as I explained, uh, in a couple of different emails and in this memo, this is the state expressly preempting our home rule of law. They're saying, we don't have a choice in that. You will adopt this ordinance, and this ordinance is as skinny as it gets and providing for an affordable housing for willing districts. Uh, and so, so at some point, we're gonna have to pass an ordinance that allows for this activity. And then we're gonna have to work with the state just to ensure that the state are in certain place, to ensure that, that people are living up to the, the terms of the, of the ordinance.
Can I ask something for that?
Please.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Uh, it's very common in a separated process, when the planning has worked, when the, when the developer, there's all kinds of agreements that are made and, um, the regulations that are put in place that they're worked through, that might be put into homeowners association, or something, or the deed. So those, there are tools that are created in an ongoing measure of the development process that application process. So it would not be, in my experience, uncommon to be developing this, so that it all gets before the formal homeless branch at the end of, of the review process. So it would be established, it would have to be established. I can't tell you something with that most likely right now, but they wouldn't be able to get a tool, and that was put in place and everyone's cleared how we go forward and enforce and do, et cetera.
So essentially, we're being told we have to do something that the state doesn't quite have, the regulation is in place, or yet?
It's not uncommon for the state to pass regulations and then realize there are laws in the legislation. And, and, and again, as, you know, I tried to explain, this is really no different than short land zoning. Right, I mean, fifty years ago, the state passed a short land zoning statute that said every community with shore crimes in their community is going to have a short land zoning. So I wasn't around, I imagine there was some dashing teeth uh, about that at the time. And the reason for that is because the state recognized there was an overriding need to protect water bodies in the state. Right now, this preemptive, um, uh, the preemption of our home rule authority is being thrust upon us because the state says there's a housing branch, we gotta do something to address it. And this is the, the, the tool that they're using in order to do that.
So, I, I want you all to know when it's my turn, so I don't step on anybody.
Yeah. May I have the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry, Jim. So you're fine.
Oh, yeah.
Just to get a clear understanding, just, I read much of the material, and I know Stephen's on, and you can hear us. I'm just trying to understand and write notes here. Bruce just made a point that it is, I understand. So if it's not financed, they can build what they want, and it follows, it follows this line, and they're even charging whatever they want for rent. Yeah, okay, so that's, but what is, can you give me clarification on that?
So in order to qualify as affordable housing, you're serving households with an area with a median, you're serving a household whose income is no more than eighty percent of the area median income. And so as I just explained, for a two-person household, that's, that's two thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
Andrew, I, I think we get that part.
No, I know. I need, I need.
He's, he's clarifying his question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, James.
Yeah.
Okay, am I answering your question?
Yeah, yeah, you keep, keep, keep going.
And so, and so for that, for that, the rent of that unit could be no more, could consume no more than thirty percent of that two-person household, fifty-two thousand dollars in annual income.
Okay, that, that helps there. The second, I guess I have a lot of questions. What about Spence family? Does, I saw some verbiage in there, it's a family number, if you're building a dwelling or having a dwelling.
So that's that broken apart from the affordable housing. And in fact, there's a question on our, uh, on our Zoom right now that says, isn't that the point of affordable housing, build an ADU accessory dwelling unit and rent at the affordable housing level? No, an ADU is not affordable housing. And so, and so, but it's a tool that the state says you can, we want you to do this in order to help serve that, that, the housing front. So, so for instance, Jim, instead of your mother-in-law having to have, you know, search for a house that fits her needs, where they're saying, you can build an ADU at your place, she can live there, and then her house is hopefully gonna serve another family.
So I can move in with Bruce.
Yeah.
So, and continue on is, really, and hopefully Mark or, or Dawn, maybe you can look at this mini bonus here, it just popped in my head. How many lots are we talking about in, that maybe even qualify for this that are in town?
Which portion, the ADU or the?
Affordable house. It seems like there's not a lot in town.
How about the ADUs? I'm, do you have a figure on that one?
Well, well, every, every lot can build an ADU.
Okay, all right.
If it, if it meets setbacks.
Yes, it still has to meet all the regulation setbacks, septic capacity, all those things, but as long as they can be what currently exists in the zoning ordinance, every, every lot has the opportunity to build an accessory dwelling.
Okay, does that have to be attached?
No.
So, and then my last point here is with the water and sewer, and it kind of goes on this, because I'd like to see our waters who expand. I mean, I can't express it enough. I, I, I know, I'd love to see, because I, and we have a lot of properties that could serve us, but adding these things in town would put more people on the water and sewer, hopefully that would drive, and drive more revenue, correct? Which would potentially maybe give them revenue to make an expansion outward.
Theoretically.
Correct, and that's all I want to use. Thank you.
So one of the applications submitted to me is on water and sewer, what, yeah, they are required to go to utilities district to get permission to make sure that it's just, it sounds like it's pretty abundant and, and work. And it's the same follows for the ADU and subterranean.
Though, if you could picture somebody building on an ADU, it is a minimum of a two-bedroom system. Uh, so it's gonna need its own separate tank, or if not, it's gonna add in line at least seven hundred fifty gallons more tank capacity. So you're looking at probably two, two one thousand gallons, and, and, so if those requirements can't be met, then the ADU can't be built, because the subsurface is most important.
Absolutely.
And then the setback is probably behind the side, so.
But that's why I'm in favor of just doing it where there is water and sewer, I just think that there is.
But the ADUs, I don't think we can legally, no.
Right now, okay.
No.
But we could write an ordinance.
If you're less restrictive, but you can be more. So the more restrictive would not, you, you would not, if a single family can be placed on this property and an ADU could be built, you can't tell them no, basically the way the state is saying. It's not a, a CEO, world, and MBOIs, for not a fair, it's, but it just takes the local control away.
Home office.
So it is what it is, so we have to kind of, we have to deal with it.
I have two things. One is to kind of drill down on Bruce's question. Can you build that dwelling unit on thirty-five hundred square feet and pay for it and then not have it be an affordable housing? Wants an area zone for thirty-five hundred square foot lot with a dwelling unit on it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there's a piece, a place where we're going to be able to form thirty-five hundred square foot lots as long as they meet setbacks and subsurface waste water, um, they're may, they may not be regulated.
It'd be, it'd be made of, and how we're operated today.
Yeah, except for the thirty-five hundred square foot lot.
No, the thirty-five hundred square foot lot is the minimum lot size in the village.
Right, but you could go outside it.
What do you mean, you could go outside?
You don't have to put that into the village.
Well, if you, if you're not building in the village zone, then your minimum lot size increases. So it depends upon which zone.
And I, I guess I'm wondering how many people that actually have residential homes in the village, so I see their neighbors add a, an affordable housing here. Um, and then I, I'm not gonna say anymore of this, I promise, but I.
Can I, can I just ask something, Dawn? To your point, Roy, about, you know, the Airbnb's and everything, and how can we ensure that this, this is affordable housing? Maybe we ask Craig or Tavis to put a bill in next year to clarify that these folks have to report if in fact they are abiding by that, that affordable housing requirement. I think they, I think they are. They, they have this, they have that designation, they ought to report, they have to report, and they have to say, okay, this is what we're charging for rents.
There's gotta be something in the list.
I mean, that's, that's only fair.
It'll probably land on.
There's gotta be some sort of accountability.
Yeah.
There will, we can't, there will be.
Figure out.
There will be, the statement is that they will help the town create that mechanism, it's part of the legislation. I just don't know what that looks like. But they had said.
Oh, so we have authority to, to, to make sure that that happens. Oh, okay, then that's fine.
And I can tell you specifically, it doesn't look real, I mean, I know.
And, and just to clarify, and just to speak to your point, the minimum lot size in the village is thirty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
You can't build a home in a general residential district on thirty-five hundred square feet. The minimum lot size in a general residential is thirty thousand square feet, nearly ten times the size, so. So, so I think the scenario that you were envisioning is not actually.
You think? That's good.
No, I, no, I don't think it, I know it.
Just, I, I can say quickly, addressing that, in the village zone, there are not a lot of lots that would even remotely considered second, you know, they're just, they're super tiny. Setbacks were limited? You have to, you have to meet setbacks. That would, I mean, a thirty-five hundred square lot to have another, a whole other dwelling there, I would think setbacks would be pretty.
Well, and not only that, but, you know.
And it also, it also requires that no one is on parking is added, so they can't like, put a new driveway in that parking area or behind the building.
Well, it doesn't mandate that additional parking is added.
Right.
They don't have to have additional parking. They can if they want to, all right?
Right.
Yeah, so we've had a whole lot of discussion without emotion. Usually we have a motion, a second, and discussion, so, but I would like to see a motion on two nineteen.
Well, are we done with discussions?
No, we get a discussion after.
The public.
Yeah, there, there's a gentleman online, if you pass.
Okay.
Would, would you all want to hear from him first? Okay, Tim Adams? Or yours?
Hey. Hey, everyone, this is Tim. I, I did just have a quick question. I heard a lot of talk about, um, the density bonuses and stuff like that for this thing. Uh, and I'm just kind of curious what the incentives are. Is this something that towns get a kickback from the state for? Or is this something that homeowners that say, I want to provide affordable housing to people? Is this something that they get a tax break on? Is this something that they also benefit from? Uh, I'm just kind of curious, you know, what, what's, kind of like what Bruce and Roy were saying, like, what's to keep someone from renting their tiny house at full market rate?
Okay, so, so again, there's a distinction between affordable housing and accessory dwelling units. So the tiny house is not the affordable housing. Just to be clear. And, um, I'm sorry, Tim, well, oh, as far as kickbacks, the town is not receiving any sort of kickback. We, if, if developments are built, then we will recognize the property tax revenue, uh, that that would generate. And, um, uh, and as far as I know, there is only one subsidy program provided for main housing for affordable, uh, or main housing, yeah, for affordable housing developments, and it limits the development to no more than eighteen units. And, and again, these, if you're getting that subsidy, you're gonna be monitored by main house to ensure that you are actually serving a household that earn eighty percent or less of the median area income, and that you're charging those folks to more than thirty percent of what their, their annual income is on their house. Does that answer the question, Tim?
Yeah, it does. Thank you very much. Yeah, it does. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there any further comments from, uh, members of the public? Okay, Chair will entertain a motion on two nineteen.
How do you find the actual?
I'm not gonna read them.
I move to approve. Hold on. We brought this in order. Thank you. Um, we just, I'm like, okay, I move to approve the proposed amendments to the town's tax-acquired property policy as presented.
I think you're under the wrong.
That's one.
Two nineteen.
Okay, sorry. Uh, I moved to approve on second reading zoning ordinance amendments to meet the requirements, that'll be two thousand and three as presented.
So move, I mean, a second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just to, just to, we are still talking about that overlay. I don't want to get any confusion. We're not talking about, we're talking about that amended overlay.
Yes.
So, so there.
Want to make sure I'm passing it and we don't.
So, so there are three components of Jim, and let me make sure I read these correctly. So there'll be affordable housing overlay, there is the mid-density bonus. There's allowing the accessory dwelling units by rights. And two to four housing units per lot where housing is permitted. Which, which I think mark right now, the, am I correct, and Don, the standard is you can have two unit, two dwellings on a, on a lot.
Yeah, under our current.
We have the, we have the second read, we don't approve of the actual.
We got approved last time.
Yeah.
But we get the, the second read failed.
We told them?
We did. We approved it.
When you think last time failed.
Right.
We waved the second reading failed.
Right.
Right.
So here we are, just doing that portion.
Okay.
I am.
The, the only thing I have to say is, this has been in the works since May or April two thousand twenty-two. And now we're in a big rush to get it done. I'm not very pleased about that. And also I find that in the process of doing it, a significant portion of the intent of the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan, anyway. And that would have been to, uh, build lots in more rural, small lots in more rural areas. Um, and expand the water and sewer. So I'm gonna go against it. Okay, Chair, if you have further comment?
Got a second.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a. We have, we're gonna vote?
Motion second. We want to get a motion second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. You get that? All against? Okay, moving along. Item two twenty, discussion and consideration of remending the town's tax-acquired property policy. Hopefully, we can get a, get a motion or a.
They're gonna give you some background on the double tangent?
Sure, so, um, so, so the town has a tax-acquired property policy. And we just need to amend that policy in order to inform what the new state law said, they're gonna, no. Selling your foreclosed properties, this is how you go about it.
Okay.
And so the changes to this are all meant to reflect the new state law. So we did seek input from Darren Hatkey, who is our new, uh, real estate broker. Had the town's attorney, uh, review the changes, and he has, uh, blessed those. And so, uh, once we adopt this policy, then we can issue those ninety-day, uh, notices that we're gonna sell those two foreclosed properties that we have. But additionally, at our next meeting, we're gonna seek to repeal the disbursement of funds from tax-acquired property ordinance, which this council passed in two thousand and sixteen, because that ordinance is in conflict with the new state law. So the new state law receives that ordinance. And so, but we, uh, our attorney advised us that before we moved more than selling those two foreclosed properties, we needed a policy to reflect the new law.
What's the, uh, you contracted with Homestead?
Yes.
Um, were there any other firms in the area that wanted to?
No, we only got one, one proposal.
Yeah, and what, what's the percentage?
Uh, it depends upon the property, but we're not paying the percentage. So that,
Coming out of proceeds.
That comes from the proceeds that will go to the prior owner. We're to whatever is owed to us in taxes.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right.
Right.
I remember that.
Right. Uh, I'd like to, uh, make a motion, please, to, uh, approve the amendments to the town tax-acquired property policy as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Give that one to Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, and all that are in favor of that? We're all in favor, Anthony. Okay, item two twenty-one, consideration of disbursement warrants. Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the, uh, disbursement warrants as presented.
Second.
On, on, so we have a second, any discussion? All in favor? Director show all are in favor? Okay, uh, two twenty-two, item two twenty-two, consideration of recommendations from the appointments committee. Does it give one?
No, I just wondered, and why do, why do we all have to vote on it when only you, uh, half of us see it?
Because state law requires that the council vote on it.
Alright, that's, that's another one of those.
You can't see it. I'll share with you.
It's light breathing.
Nobody, don't insult anybody, but Lynn is chasing me around here, and item two twenty-two, uh, suggest motion.
I'll move to confirm the recommendation of the appointments committee to appoint Ellen O'Brien to the village revitalization committee, second.
All in favor? All are in favor?
Let's do all of them, just all of them, yeah, they're in the same motion, so.
The next one.
Uh, I move to confirm the recommendation of the appointments committee to appoint Ellen O'Brien to the village revitalization committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Director show all in favor? Okay.
I move that we confirm the recommendation the appointments committee to appoint Penny Craig to the village revitalization committee, and to move to confirm the recommendation the appointments committee to appoint Gao Susi to the village revitalization committee.
I second.
Okay, second? Bruce, okay, all in favor? Director show all in favor? Okay, other business? Nothing I can think of?
I do have one quick thing. Can you, uh, I'm asking Anthony, can you explain that a little bit better about this whole, um, elevator ordeal at the library?
Why would you call it an ordeal, Roy?
Well, it's, it's an RFP that went out. It was my understanding that every, that, uh, everything, we already had a, uh, a, a quote. Uh, it was my understanding that we, we were trying to, uh, approve or, uh, approve additional funds as a contingency. Uh, it was, uh, also my understanding that, well, we, we were well beyond the RFP or design stages of this elevator. I guess, I, I guess I misunderstood that all idea.
I did too. I did too. In agreement with Roy, I, I missed it too. I thought that was all.
Then, then our apology. So, so what happened was the two hundred thousand dollars from part that was approved, that is based on an estimate from our architect of what the project will cost. And then the recommendation was we have ten percent contingency for that. But the project still, as you can imagine, when you're demolishing, demolishing a, uh, an elevator, and then you're installing a new elevator, that requires blueprints. And so we needed an architect to actually draft the blueprints. He put together the RFP for us, and now we're looking at, searching for someone who's actually gonna do the project.
Okay, so we didn't even have anybody to do it at that point?
No.
Good, I know. I think several, it's got the impression that there had been an RFP estimate, and a work with progress.
And we were lined up to get started.
Always, so you guys are always going to approve every RFP, especially, I mean, the.
Well, this all started though, before we had the, before we were doing the policy.
But, but even so, I mean, two hundred thousand dollars, I can't, I mean, I can't speak to what happened before me. I would never spend two hundred thousand dollars without you guys voting on it and approving a contract.
So right now we haven't done anything, and we're going to put this out the bid.
We, we had put it out for bid, uh, at our architect's suggestion. Proposals are due no later than March the first. He felt like we needed that part of a timeline in order to get, for someone to submit, to go over the plans and submit a bid. And then the plan is to have the project done by October first of twenty twenty-four.
How, whoa, just a question. I, I mean, what about ADA compliance currently at the library? It's inaccessible?
Uh, this problem is problematic at best, so the, uh, the, the lift works sporadically.
When they have them placed now? Okay.
October is what, nine months away? Did I get that wrong?
Uh, yeah, October is eleven months.
Yeah, that's too long. There's no need to.
You can only do so many things so fast.
That's, you're, you're.
You know.
Here's the problem. You know, the October date is realistic. We just looked into an elevator and it was almost eight months from the time we placed the order and paid for it until it could actually be delivered.
Could be right. Ri- Richard did try to get me to test out the elevator that's there. I wasn't getting.
Well, the ball was rolling.
With the, with the.
Not as far as having a contract.
Alright. Alright.
Alright.
So, now, what we're at?
Um, we need to check to see if anyone from the garden club is on the line.
Okay.
Hey, Andy?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have my hand up. We're trying to find a policy. I'd like to talk, comment on what we're talking about with the elevator stuff.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to kind of help me wind it back. And I, I thought, I was confused too, but thanks for the clarification. Didn't we also vote on some contingency money? On this, where we didn't even have a bid then?
You did, and so.
Well, I did, I voted against, okay. I just want you guys to understand that. That I didn't understand why we were asking for more money when we don't even have a bid on this.
Well, and, and understand, Jim, I mean, those ones are contingent.
Sure, I understand.
And so, and so we budgeted two hundred thousand. We budgeted two hundred thousand dollars. If the bid comes in at two, two ten, then we've already got the funds.
Right, but at, at that point, I really would have to come back and say, this is the quote, this was gonna cost, and then if we needed extra money, that's where we should make the approval for that contingency money. Not now, I mean, you're bringing the cart before the horse, are you? Well, you're giving it, caught lunch, saying the guy can't even overdid it by twenty percent.
Oh, I think it's never done.
Because the funds are available.
Well, we just said.
Yeah.
So, two hundred thousand dollars was the estimate that we received on the project.
Yeah.
This is typical construction, ten percent contingency on a large construction project. So that's worth the twenty thousand.
But that's on the quote, not on the.
No, it's on the estimate. So that twenty thousand is based on the estimate. We don't know what the quote is gonna be. We'll find out sometime in the spring.
And wasn't there also a timeline where we had to designate where we were gonna put the ARPA funds?
It'll run over on estimate.
Yes, but we're not there, you know.
Run over a quote. That's, you know, you, you would run over on an estimate. You don't run over on an estimate, you would run over a quote. That's where you would need the contingency.
Roy's kind of right, but what, what happens is an architect will estimate, contractor will quote, then they'll tear out a wall if one of them's on the architect's, and that becomes after work.
I understand that, but at that point, he's already quoted to work, correct?
Yeah, you know.
So, uh, in, in that scenario, I think what happens is a contractor comes to whoever and says, hey, listen, you know, I found this extra wall and this, uh, came to the old.
Yeah, those could be changed. Those could be changed, or then we'll, and then we'll consider whether or not we have that change.
Used to be that guy.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yep, let's move on.
Alright, so, um, as I mentioned to some of you.
I need to, uh, can I, just for a second, Anthony, can I ask if any representatives from the garden club? Okay, that's officially off.
Get in the water.
Okay, so, uh, public comment? Okay, that's off. Town manager's report, please.
Okay, so, uh, as I mentioned to some of you earlier, we had a visit last week from Katie Cog, the EEP, EPA, to look at the mill. They were thrilled at what they saw there. I think there's great potential in that mill. But the first thing that's gotta happen is an environmental site assessment. So that any developer who might come in there knows exactly what they're dealing with. And if they find anything that's terribly problematic, they'll help us rid that, uh, that site of that. And so, um, the EPA and the DEP all said, we're gonna help you get this project done, we're gonna help you with funding. And so, that was really exciting. I mean, I was really excited to see how excited that they were about it, because they, they study these things all the time. I said, this is one of the best main mills that they, that they've been in as far as the potential for redevelopment. So that is really exciting. At our next meeting on January the eighth, um, myself, school superintendent, and the police chief are gonna be here just to talk with you about the possibility of accepting Rambler Road as a town road. It is not currently a town road. And apparently there was a thought that it wouldn't, that the specs of the road didn't mean, um, DOT standards. And when I contacted the DOT, they said, there's no reason that can't be a town road. And the reason that we're wanting you to consider accepting it as a town road is that because, because it's not a town road. It's a private road. The, uh, police department cannot force a speed limit on that. So, so.
Interesting.
So they're, they're wanting, they're wanting to have a posted speed limit that isn't forcible in order to ensure a safer.
I think I've seen the results of that a few times.
So anyways, we're gonna have that discussion. We're gonna have that discussion on January the eighth. Um, last week also met with a entity LED, which ended the, uh, grid lamp converting for us, the LEDs. We're tapping into a program that they talked to the town about, about three years ago. We're converting all of the lighting in all of our facilities to LED. It would be budget neutral. And once we realize the payoff of that, then there'd be a cost savings in electricity to the town. So, so worked on an RFP, sent it to efficiency main today to have them review that and offer it, but, and we're planning on putting that out to, to bid as well. So it'll be very similar to what we're doing with the, with the heat pump uh, conversion, and that it'll be budget neutral, and the town will be out of pocket. There's not even any, any of the pump cost, uh, to this specific program. As I mentioned, uh, a little earlier, on January eighth, we also want to engage in a discussion on the designated growth area. So we'll have some, some votes from Katie Cog here to speak to that. Uh, also on January eighth, we'll have the swearing in of the re-swearing in by Councilman Wayman, and the swearing at Councilman Wayman against a media.
And some more rallying.
Yeah, right.
And, uh, and Aaron White. So, uh, what I'd like to do is do that here in a public forum, as opposed to what happened. So you get a, you know, a lot more recognition than you did, uh, last time, Roy.
Ten, five.
And, and have a little brief reception here, a little punching cookies, and everyone can slap, uh, Roy and Aaron on the back. And then continue with the, the meeting. I'd also like to recognize, uh, Elizabeth's service on the council, if she will agree to briefly attend the meeting.
And bring cookies.
But you can have the cookies today.
I'll, I'll initiate a charm up and to Elizabeth to try to get her to come in.
Can I ask a question about the, the Rambler Road and?
Yes.
When the high school and middle school were originally built, there was a, I don't know what the name of the street is.
Charles.
Charles Street. Why, why can't we use Charles Street?
And we'll let the, uh, the police chief and the superintendent explain that.
It's, it's shut off at the top.
Yeah.
Is it in writing?
Uh, okay, yeah, they'll explain the dynamics.
There's a gate right there where Charles Street stopped and Rambler Road stopped.
I'm familiar with it, yeah.
So also on January the eighth, uh, the law superintendent is here, just gonna talk about the, uh, just give you an overview of the, uh, the Winter Public School budget. Uh, it's not going to be a great picture, he says, and so he wants to give you folks, uh, heads up.
It's never a good picture.
Can we get, can you request from, uh, Jim, a, a little information on the electric buses? And, uh, the status of them, why we are not using them?
Okay, I'll ask.
I see them being.
I've seen them used as well. I know, I know that they initially had some, uh, windshield issue. It had nothing to do with the engine, it was windshield.
Well, I can tell you that, uh, when I dropped my son off at the school, three or four days after that snowstorm, there was two of them still covered in the snow. So I'm just curious as to what's going on with them.
Okay. Uh, also, uh, I thought I might start, just start a discussion on if we want to consider some other uses of the Annabessin cook building now that we've cleared out, uh, a lot of the junk out of that building. So we'll have that discussion. Uh, on January twenty-sixth, the second meeting in January, um, you folks are gonna get to engage in NIMs training, which is the National Incident Management Citizen Training. It is required.
Mark loves it, I can tell.
It is required of all elected. It is required of all elected officials, and we need to be NIMs compliant, so that if we need to apply for either BMO or FEMA grants, that, that we're.
So we're getting it that day?
We're getting it that day, so it'll be uh, uh, an hour and a half to two hour training somewhere from the Kennebec Valley. Uh, Kennebec County Emergency Management Agency is gonna be here to lead that training, uh, you guys.
Can you please get as much notice in advance, as much in advance, notice in advance as you can for that, if you're gonna take up that chunk of time?
I'm, I'm giving it, right now, it's, it's December twenty first, and we're talking about January twenty second. So, uh, so the other thing that we need to do is also have, uh, and this was mentioned in our executive session, in the community resilience forum. Where we get folks to suggest how we might spend our fifty thousand dollar grant for community resilience. I don't know if we want to try to engage in that same night, given the length of uh, of the form, but so of the NIMs training, so we could talk about an hour and a half to two hours for that. Maybe another hour for the community resilience forum.
Can we start early, like six o'clock, though?
That sounds good to me.
Okay, I'd rather do that if we're gonna give you a two hour training, that's, that makes sense.
Can I let that segue me into a subject? I had a brief conversation with Anthony, I had a little confusion about when we were gonna start this meeting tonight? And it was just because so many memos were going back and forth. And then I got to thinking, why don't we start a regular, usually executive sessions only last half an hour? And forever we were starting at six, and then fiddle running around waiting, um, you remember that? And so, I ran this by Anthony, what, what happens if we start our regular meetings at six thirty? Our executive session's at six, and then those that don't have time to eat before the meetings get to get home early enough, they aren't starving, but they don't get there.
I think a lot of people like the seven o'clock, because if they get home from work, you know, you're, you're, it it's one thing if we have things, a lot of things on the agenda, but. I think seven o'clock, that's what people think that they're gonna come here, so I, I wouldn't change it.
Okay, it's just an idea, how about everybody else, weigh in real quick, we can get out of here.
I'm okay with seven, gives me just to get home and see the kids before you spend all night.
Okay, we'll leave it at seven.
Uh, that's one. One last thing, and that is, I sent to you guys a proposed budget schedule, and the, the question that I asked about that was. Do you want, so, when we did budget last year, you guys were only meeting once a month, then we had special meetings for, for budget, right? Now we're meeting twice, so, do you want to try to talk budget at each of our twice monthly meetings, or do you want to schedule? Budget workshops meetings that are separate and apart from those two monthly meetings to focus just solely on, on the budget?
We can add one, I think, a couple departments each on, yeah.
So we say we're gonna need to be separate meetings?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
You want separate meetings?
I think we should stick to Mondays, though, because that's.
We need to add some, something, because many people over.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just think we should stick to Mondays, and we all know to be cautious about booking on Monday nights.
Okay, so, so with that, I will, I'll send you a.
More, um, kind of in schedule.
Budget schedule.
I have one question for the managers' report. Um, where are you at on securing possibly a grant to get uh, a couple of charging stations for cars either downtown or another areas?
So that will be one of the options that we will discuss at the community resiliency forum.
Okay.
Because at those funds, that's one of the options, that, one of the possibilities for using those funds. As is an open space plan and lots of other possibilities.
It's part of the.
And and, and and to keep in mind that, and and I'm gonna be. Next month, after the Manchester Select Board meeting with third town manager, because there are also going to be a commu- community resilience. Fund recipient, and if we can find some project that we can partner with them on, that our fifty thousand dollar grant all of a sudden becomes a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar grant between the two communities. So there's, there's a possibility to get some additional funding.
Okay, sure. All right, thank you very much, Anthony.
Um, I just want to say something quickly, I hope that you do attend the next meeting, but it has been wonderful me, uh, working with you on the council. Um, it's been really good and been fun. Had a bunch of times.
Things live.
You do.
I, I, I guess I'd have to say that after knowing you for about every year, that I just didn't quite know, hell, who's gonna go?
Thirty years, nice.
You have.
I've only been in this town twenty three years.
Oh, well, close enough, when you hit seventy, everything seems like thirty years ago.
And would anyone like a cookie before you go?
Yeah, yeah, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn, first second, we're out of here. We're out of here.
Anyone like a cookie before you go? We have the last sprinkles here.